Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.
Hello, my name is Bo. I'm the manager here at Splash in a Flash, Frank's Automotive, and Frank's Quality Housing LLC.
Since 2009, Frank's Automotive.
Splash in a Flash.
And Frank's Quality Housing LLC has provided local professional services for our community.
Services such as auto detailing.
Mechanic work.
1995 oil change.
24/7 towing and roadside assistance.
Pressure washing.
Ask about our VIP membership.
We would like to thank you for your business.
Call us at 205-921-2378.
Located at 115 Pike Trail Hamilton Alabam.
Like us on Facebook, Splash in a Flash LLC.
Okay, we've got a few things to cover today. And we've got LED solutions. Mr. Jones is with us today and he'll be speaking to us in a few minutes. And we've got Mr. Buddy Fite here with us. And we're gonna talk to Buddy today about some changes that are taking place next door to us that involves some properties that he owns or has interest in. And I'm gonna let him explain his position. I've asked Andrea to come also. And since she kinda knows the values of the historic site we're in here today, I want her to hear this and kinda lay out what she feels that we can and can't do inside the building and on our grounds maybe also. So Buddy, we're gonna give you some time to talk first of all.
Okay. Over there in the office, for those of you that may not have been in there, the law firm sort of created a replica of my dad's office that was up town, you know, inside the new building. And they have sold that building to CIS. And so I've got to try to get that paraphernalia out of there. And I was wondering if the city of Hamilton had any interest in wanting to get, you know, have use of all that. Don't put something on the city that's a burden on them. And I'm also here to offer to you the old law office building. And to go with both of those things, Bill Atkinson and I both have agreed to make a donation to the city, $2,500 a piece, to, you know, to help with relocating the building or doing whatever we're gonna do with, you know, with my dad's paraphernalia that he had. Now, Les Walters has expressed an interest in displaying some old op-ed cartoons that are originals that he's got. He's got about a half a dozen of them. Some of them, one of them probably the best one was somewhere about 1961 or two, gonna re-crank up the Quickie DeBor's Mill, you know? It's got a caricature of daddy there with a hand crank trying to get the mill going. Isn't that awful? But he enjoys those little cartoons. And Les has an interest in wanting to display them over at the Journal Record. Whatever the city of Hamilton and Les work out with that, it'll be fine.
How many things are over there, Buddy?
Oh, there's probably 20 pictures over there. And there's a desk and a credenza and some assorted law books. I'll show you one item, and I never did, I didn't know we even had this till Carrie gave it to me. 1943, when my dad was on the way to North Africa, he was a navigator on B-24. And they had been training in Nebraska. And everybody lived east of Nebraska and they were headed toward Miami to finally go to Rio de Janeiro, cross to the Azores out in the Atlantic, and then finally to North Africa. They flew over the house, and this is a streamer. And it's got a sandbag here and this streamer behind it. And it says, "To E.B. Fite." That's my granddaddy. And when you open it up in here, there's a message in there. And Carrie Bolton's the one that gave it to me. Her mother had it. I never even knew the thing existed. And this little old message, you know, still very legendary.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what he said. Said, "Hi, Hamilton, the best B-24 and its crew has just wobbled its wings and a glad hello. Wish we could land. Whoever finds this, give my love to the Fites. Rankin Fite. Destroy this note ribbon in reasonable time." Well, apparently they never give a reasonable time.
It's still here.
But that's one little piece of paraphernalia amongst some others that are over there.
And he dropped that out of the plane as well.
He dropped it out of the plane and out there at the house, I've got some pictures that he made out of the plane, of Hamilton Alabam in 1943 from an aerial view. And they got down there, they, unusual story. They finally got to Rio de Janeiro, and when they got to Rio de Janeiro, there were only limited number of planes that could take off because they had limited ramp space at the Azores, those islands out there in the Atlantic. So when your plane arrived, they went to the bottom of the list. Well, there'd be crews coming in there anxious to get to war. This bunch wasn't all that anxious to get to war. So they would sail their slot to a crew that was wanting to go, and they'd go to the bottom of the list.
Absolutely.
Well, they stayed down there about 20 days doing that, you know? And then finally they took off, and on the way over, the pilot says to my dad, says, "Rankin, you're a lawyer. You're gonna have to be the one going out and explaining to them why we're 20 days late."
He probably did.
Well, he did probably did something. The Articles of War and the Uniform Code of Military Justice says that any officer in the military can represent a soldier that is being dealt with, you know, either court martial or company punishment or whatever. Well, my dad was probably the only lawyer in the wing or the bond group, and he ended up representing all of them, you know? When they tried to get somebody and they get them in trouble, he'd represent them. He'd go in there and get them off, you know? And so they stayed mad with him all the time because he'd get them off, you know?
I guess one of the things, Buddy, in relation to the items that are over at the law office, is that we've turned the mansion into a working office. And while we could probably house a few more things in the front and make it look more like a display or a museum type setting, probably in our work offices, we don't need to mix and mingle very much of that into the working section of the, that's just my concept on it. And I didn't know if the law office itself could house a portion of those things that...
I think they probably could eventually, you know, maybe put the desk and, you know, the credenza in there. Might be someplace to put it. The pictures and, you know, those items that are framed, I think I won't do them in here somewhere if we could do it and, you know...
Carrie and I had talked about some areas that are still kind of available if the city agrees to have a display of in the hearth room or in the tea area or in the living room. So there's some wall space that maybe a curio unit might hold some artifacts. Or she had talked about maybe the family helping with something to display some of the artifacts that aren't hung on the wall.
Okay. We don't have too many artifacts like that, you know? Most of them are just pictures.
Well, pictures, even pictures could be stood up in there and that sort of thing.
Most of them, there's some pictures, there's some pictures of things. There's one unique one. I went to Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri for Senior Commander's Conference out there, and there was a display case out there for Engineer OCS. My dad went to Engineer OCS at Fort Belvoir, Virginia, and looked in there and the class was his class and he was in it. It was the only picture they had of a class from World War II in that display case. And the Sergeant Major of the Post got me a copy of all of it. So I've got one, it's a long picture, it's probably like that long. And then there are those composites of all the legislatures, you know, that my dad was in when he was Speaker. And there's a couple of portraits, one when he was Speaker in '55 and one when he was Speaker in '67.
One of the things that we had done, once we thought the law office might come in this direction, was to get some estimates of the moving. And I've got a fax in there on my machine or email. And of course, the company is reputable that would be moving it and would care for it and not tear it up.
Is that that Kennedy?
It's Kennedy.
I'm familiar with that.
Yeah.
They got a hunch.
They are.
And this didn't include someone to raise the wires as they come from over there to here. But I think the moving cost was around $14,000 to move the building. And I guess that's preparing it to move, putting it on wheels and rolling it over here. They're not covering a great distance, but you have to take precautions when you move a building to make sure that it's intact when you get it there. So we can't just pick it up with a port lift and roll it over here. It's gonna be taking a moving company, so...
What size is that bill? I didn't think it was that long.
15 by 36, I think.
15 by 36?
16 by 36.
16? Well, that's just a small mobile home. I can't see $14,000 for moving it across the street here if that's where you're expecting to move it to.
Well, that's...
That's just one estimate from someone who does it on a regular basis. And he has moved very large brick historic homes. And he said he would come down and look at it more carefully. I sent pictures to him.
You don't have anything brick? You're talking about a lot of different, that's a wood building, just like a mobile home. Nothing but a mobile home. They can put those axles and wheels under it. And I don't know what kind of shape, you know what I'm saying? But all they gotta do is put, they got axles and wheels they can put under that and move it over here across the street to me, don't you think?
Looked like it, I mean, I don't know what kind of shape the structure is in.
Yeah, that's what I was...
But if it was sound, real, you know, sound and good stuff, it looked like, you know, it could be no further than it's gonna go.
Angela and I were talking earlier today about the building. If it remains wood siding, it's definitely gotta have a paint job. We were talking about whether or not if we put wood looking vinyl on it and be finished with the, is that gonna ruin the integrity of the building?
I would think so.
To vinyl it.
Yeah, I would think so. I think you need to leave it, if you're gonna do it, you need to leave it the way it is.
You can preserve it with just a good, you know, coat.
Buddy, you don't know who moved it down here, do you?
I do not, but I'm gonna suggest maybe a call to Bill Atkinson. He'll probably know who, but he'll probably recall who moved it. Cause they moved it off these grounds over there.
Part of the moving process is this company allows the building to sit above where you have the foundation. And then it's kind of leveled and that sort of thing. I don't know how that would take place with other movers, but that's how he does it. So I think he has it on beams and then it's kind of suspended over where you have the foundation built up to it.
Yeah. I think Tammy expressed a question that we'd need to probably verify. Is the building still gonna be an ownership of the Fite family or is the building gonna be ownership of the city of Hamilton after this?
We'd like for the city to have, we'd like to donate it to the city.
Okay. That's, I guess for the sake of knowing where we stand in the whole big picture, we'd like to know if it'll really be under the ownership of the city or your family would still consider it a treasure of theirs and just something on the property.
We'd prefer the city, we'd prefer the city to have it because I think that's the...
Okay.
Mayor, it was included in the National Register also. So it was by amendment. I went back and looked at the register. Did you know that?
Okay, I didn't, I didn't even know that.
What's inside the building?
Nothing.
So all we're getting is just the building?
Yes, sir.
Everything else is in the law office that he's talking about.
You figuring on giving the city that stuff to go into the building?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it didn't need to be in the building, that'd be the...
And then maybe, as I say, the framed objects, you know, out here where you don't have to go through so much environmental control in there, is that, you know, maybe, I think we'd like to see them hung somewhere here in City Hall.
Yeah. They would damage out there because of humidity and other factors that wouldn't be a climate-controlled type environment, yeah. What's the time limit on this, Buddy, as far as us acting on it and getting it off that property and moved? The council deems that we want to act on this in a positive manner.
The new owner is CIS, and I think that Paula, you know, Paula Reeves will work with the city.
Okay.
You know, what...
Okay. But those things didn't go in the deal. In other words, they were supposed to be moved.
Yes, sir. That was, that's my understanding, is that it is not. And she's given me some gray stain to get things situated. She's given me gray stain till the 15th of March, you know, of what's inside there.
Yeah. We have a council meeting and probably another workshop before those dates. So we want to hear from you today as to what's coming to us if we act on it and what we would be expected to do, past accepting it, you know?
Yes, sir.
Mainly, the law office is a historic building. Do you know when that building was built? Do you have a guess?
I don't even really, I don't really have a guess because I can't remember time without it.
Yeah.
And so I'm...
Is the building, or would we be safe to say that it's a hundred years old?
It's, it's that or more.
Yeah. I remember it being there in the early 40s, sitting over there, Mr. Fite and him sitting out in front of it, chairs leaning back against...
Now, that was in the courthouse, right? Wasn't it the courthouse?
Yes, it was, if you know where Bill Fite's office is right now, it was the lot just used to be.
I wondered about, that's what Allen County was saying.
I don't remember that.
And that was, that building, the bottom floor of that building was built somewhere like '55 or '56.
Which?
Of the office upstairs, so, office uptown. So I know that's when it was moved down here to the house when my grandfather died in '54. And my grandmother passed in '55.
You saw men old building.
Yes, sir.
That's wet coal.
She's old woman.
I sold it to another fellow for a little more.
Tammy, you usually come up with the part of questions, so it's time for questions now.
I think I'll never be quiet.
You afraid it'll fall apart when we start to move?
Her granddaddy saw me over at that and about one time, and I reintroduced myself to him, hadn't seen him probably 20 years. He looked at me and said, "I don't know you to counsel." I think they feel a lot better.
Sure did. Herb, you got any questions for Buddy about this stuff? You've probably got some, but we'll try to...
Where will it sit on this property?
Herb got a lot of them, man.
I was talking to Andrea, but you might know, where will it sit on this property?
That I don't know. I know where it sat before it was like...
There's two or three ways you could put it on this side of the building, I think would be the best location.
In the grass.
In the grass.
Is that close to where it was?
Yeah, it was, yes, ma'am, it was somewhere out the south end here, and I don't recall exactly where it was.
I think it was closer to that road than further back. It's over that way than it is now. It was up closer to the intersection, which I think somewhere further back would probably be better traffic-wise.
Oh, yeah, it'd be better back here and up.
There's some level locations, there's some drainage that goes through there, but there is room for it.
And we have to, wherever the city takes it, wherever they want.
But what if it falls apart?
Well, if it falls apart, it falls apart.
Still belongs to the city.
Still belongs to the city.
We'll let you go.
No, don't tell me something, my friend.
Well, it's out of the picture, pull it up there to you, give you the mail. We'll have, if we have to move, we're gonna have to have it nailed together to keep it falling.
Well, sometimes a feller, my granddaddy, you know, at Bell's and Hodges in the banking business, and they'd have the foreclothes on this feller's mule. And they told him just to bring it to town. And he did, and he brought it over there and tied it up to a parking meter right in front of that old building, old man Ernest out there, leaned up back there making shavings. That's all he did with his knife, he was making a pile of shavings. And he looked at my granddaddy and says, "Ernest, there's your damned old mule." And he called Bell and told him to come get you.
Can you go inside that building?
Yes, I've been inside in years past. And as I say, I hadn't been in there recently, so I don't know what the condition is.
What kind of locks secure them? Is it just modern locks or an old type lock?
It's kind of a semi-modern lock, I think. But I think Bill Atkinson's got the key to it, I don't have it.
Okay. I didn't know if we might have to put a little fence around it to keep people from messing with it or if we're gonna leave it where people can actually peek through the windows and that kind of thing. We don't want them to break the windows, of course, but...
Well, we'd rather them not.
Yeah. There'll be some curiosity stirred up when we move it. It'd sit there gracefully and just raised that little light that's on. But when we move it, it's gonna get some new attention, is what I'm saying.
Some of that stuff you're talking about should go in that building.
Maybe the desk.
Most of it, because I'm afraid we're gonna get into something if we start moving a lot of it into this. And not that I'm against that, don't get me wrong, but I'm afraid that we're gonna house and we start moving it into this building, the shape it's in now.
We've had a lot of offers since we've been here, people wanting us to display things for them, Buddy, is what we're kind of elaborating on.
Fully understand.
And it's such a beautiful place, and they know it has historic value. Others have offered to let us display some of their things that really wasn't ever a part of the family. And so we're not trying to really accumulate too much where it looks cluttered or anything.
Well, Mr. Fite, not a whole lot, and everybody knows, for Hamilton and Marion County State, what I believe would look good would be if you picked out some of the main pieces that you would like to see that would be better...
How about I work with Herb and she...
Yeah, not, so that we don't need to put it up, you know what I'm, we just need the main things that you think you'd like to have exhibited, I think, in this city hall.
Well, how did you make a picture of Jimmy Doolittle pinning Rankin's medal on his chest? And Bill Weaver pointed that out. I didn't recognize Jimmy Doolittle, but by him being a historian, he knew immediately one of the most decorated war veterans that ever served was pinning your dad's medal on his chest. I thought that was so neat. We got a picture of that already framed and on display.
There's a, you know, as an aside, there's a social media, Facebook's got a lot of drawbacks, but one of the good things about it is I went to one of those group sites, friends of the B-24, listed my dad's name. I knew the squadron number and the group number and the air force number and the name of the aircraft. From that came back, guy told me, sent me the information, how the plane got its name. And sent me the serial number of it. And then from that, you go to this picture and there's pictures of the flight crew. And I could pick up out in those pictures of the flight crew because he was the tallest one in there, five foot ten.
We could put, we'd not put some of that stuff in the Solon's house since it belongs to it.
Well, if we ever get a key to it, we might could put some stuff in the Solon's.
We're working on getting us a key, Herb.
I'd give up on trying to get a key to that place. I think we need to get some lock messages changed and so...
We might be in...
Bill Atkinson will be up here tomorrow. I'll ask him about, I'll ask him about who moved it, who they got to move it first time when they moved it off this side over there.
Well, Buddy, we'll have an additional discussion amongst ourselves. I'd like you and Andrea to talk some now. And we've got a few other items we want to cover today, so thank you for coming. That's somewhere interesting right there.
Well, I didn't know about this till two years, you know, Carrie gave us that.
Buddy, you said Bill had the key to it?
I think he did. I think I'll ask him about that, too.
I think they had laid, they had laid a gene, maybe they needed to walk over and look at the building from the inside and get a feel of walking on those floors, how sturdy we think the thing is to...
There's some house movers from Walker County.
Oh, good, okay.
It's Guthrie's. They've moved houses from here.
Na'au Boos.
Yeah, Na'au Boos. Na'au folks, yeah. Guthrie's, they're good movers.
Tammy walked around, went right over there and moved it.
That's really neat.
Great seeing you all.
Good seeing you, Buddy.
Tammy, it's Lord of Love, go with us.
Maybe this one was made by your own.
Wilson, you, there's any snakes in there, you holler and say there's a snake in here.
It follows that. That's where Tammy went.
That's right.
I know one night, I don't pay no $16,000 for that.
Well, that was just a real reputable company that made this offer. Of course, that don't include us creating a new foundation over here on our property for it. We go, that is an addition. And someone to lift those electric wires up as they come under them. The wire raisers will have to be paid and the foundation will have to be set up for this thing for it to be put on a foundation.
It may be getting into something.
Well, it's a lot to consider, folks. That's why I wanna go to hear from him and then let us discuss it.
But some of the items could be put at the Solon's house as far as the inside.
Mr. Jones has traveled a long ways to be with us today, and even though he doesn't Mr. Jones has traveled a long ways to be with us today, and even though he doesn't show up on the agenda, I had let, I agreed to let him come. I told him we'd been talking with the Alabama Power Company about possibly changing out our lighting head-to-head to LED. He's in the business, he's a private vendor that's in the business. And he wanted to show us some things that would advantage us to, to work with a private concern versus the power company. And, and the key that he's talking about is the savings after the fact, some of the things that he'll be pointing out today. But I just want him to kind of give us his, uh, scenario of what he thinks he can do for the city. Something for us to digest, and, and I have a new printout from the Alabama Power Company. Uh, since we've talked last, it's just been sent to me, and that's on, I believe that's a proposal to head-to-head. And we're down to a hundred and three dollars, uh, uh, additional cost from them to, to change us out head-to-head for, uh, one hundred watt, um, LED throughout our city, all uniform. Six hundred and sixty-one posts.
Sure. How do you and the power company now get along about something like this? Since they've come to us and we're gonna be buying the power from them, and they're gonna be keeping it up, I guess, so and so forth.
That's right, yeah, they're not gonna change it.
How, how, how are they gonna feel if we don't get it from them and go and get it from a private company?
You know, that's just, you know, not doing business for them, you know, doing business for us. I don't think there's any bad blood there. Um, you know, they're, they're proposing LED just like we're, just like we are. You know, the structure of the deal, um, the savings you get from us, I feel is gonna be greater. Um, you know, if LED, if the process is to use a third of the power and get the same type of light, or the same light output, paying a hundred and thirty dollars more on your power bill than what you're originally paying right now, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, you know, I'm, I'm offering, uh, the chance to come and give you guys, you know, a proposal. Now that I understand what the numbers are, you know, I haven't done my audit yet, but I have the information now and the reconnaissance to go to work and present you guys something. Um, so where I come into, you know, a chance for you guys to really benefit is give you a cash flow savings, um, from the get-go, if we're given the opportunity to come in here and change out your lights. Um, you know, never, we've done a contract to where we come and change somebody's lights and they pay, you know, a hundred and thirty-two dollars more, um, just to get better lighting. If you do business with us, you're gonna get a chance to capture more savings on your power bill. Um, you know, talking with Amy out there, I understand you guys are spending about sixteen thousand dollars a month, um, just on power alone, with all your buildings that you own. Um, a good portion of that's lighting. Now, I'd love to have the opportunity to talk to you about your exterior streetlights, if you own those poles. If Alabama Power owns those poles, then I can't touch those poles. But what I can help you out with is I can help you out with your city hall, your public libraries, and any of the other facilities that you do own, that Alabama Power, you know, doesn't necessarily want to come and change out, you know, the city hall. So, um, I'm just here to help in any way I can and offer my services. Tell you a little bit about some other municipalities that we've worked with, um, some of our capabilities, and, you know, see you guys.
Who are some of the city chiefs, sir, Mr. Jones?
Right, so, you know, City of Demopolis, we did their city hall, and we did their public library. Um, we got a proposal in for City of Tallisie that's been approved, and we'll have to do that work here within the next two months. Um, City of Childersburg, and then we did do the streetlights for, um, City of Tuscaloosa. So, you know, we could get you information on any of those municipalities, but it's probably information you probably could just call up the mayor there and, and ask for who they worked with with an LED solution. So, um, we have the same capabilities as Alabama Power. We offer tier-one lighting solutions, you know, for your streetlights out there. My streetlight replacement fixture would be a Philips fixture. Um, you know, that's a ten-year warranty, you know, fixture from Philips, they've been around for hundreds of years. So, uh, we do offer quality, and I just want a, a chance to compete.
So you're talking about, like, these lights?
Yes, ma'am.
So where did Andrea go? Because And, I mean Andrea's the one that picked all these lights. Andrea is the architect, she's the one that did this, we've only been in this building two years?
Two years, huh?
So Andrea needs to be talking to you if you're gonna make suggestions to change what she did less than two years ago. I mean, we need her input, where could she go?
Absolutely.
And there's not, you know, when you talk about changing, you're looking up at a fixture like that, all you have to do is just, when I say retrofit, you keep your existing, you know, architectural aesthetic look. Um, but right now, these lights are being powered by ballast, and you've got four lamps in each fixture. Okay, I can give you a sixty-five percent reduction per fixture and eliminate that ballast that you're having to buy that's powering up these lights. So that helps eliminate the maintenance for each fixture, and also your bulb reduction per fi, per fixture, um, with giving you the same light output. So, you know, over time, you can outrun the savings of, you know, in each fixture here, you've got about a hundred and thirty-two total watts. And what you would have with my two bulbs would be around thirty-eight total watts, and give you the same amount of light output as that a hundred and thirty-two. So with the hours you're running and the maintenance you're spending on changing bulbs and changing ballast, um, you know, the return on your investment is significantly quick, um, versus, you know, the cost of doing, doing the job. So I understand investing in a property that you've already changed your lights out in two or three years. Um, you know, a ballast usually fails within three to four years. So you're upcoming on some ballast failure that you will have. And, um, any other buildings that may have not been updated within the last three years be a great opportunity for us to look at something that's a little bit more out of date, um, to give you better lighting, one, but also give you savings while we're doing that as well.
So all you're speaking of is the buildings that we, the city owns?
That's correct. Yeah, that, and it's also, you know, an opportunity to present you streetlighting, um, you know, conversions as well, and structure maintenance contract to get you cash flow positive, rather than paying two hundred dollars additional on what you're paying for your power now.
But we don't own the poles.
Okay, if you don't own the poles, if Alabama Power owns the poles, then I can't do anything for those.
I'm assuming they own the poles, since they're the ones that dictated about the Christmas lights.
Well, I thought when I was found, I wasn't sure if we owned the poles.
Every place, I'm gonna tell them that.
Yeah, they're the ones, so I'm pretty sure.
They called the shots about our Christmas lights, they said, you know, your lights have to be ten feet from our wires, and they were within six feet, so it became a law, and, and they, they put us on notice that it was a law now. And we couldn't take our own Christmas lights down if we waited until after January one this year, so.
Sure, and I don't, you know, I didn't know any of this information coming in, but it's good to know and understand after meeting with you guys. Um, you know, who owns what, but, you know, you own your buildings, and, you know, they supply power to you. But, you know, I can significantly reduce your energy footprint in, in any building that you own, um, based off looking at, you know, some of your existing lighting that you have now.
We have, we have two, uh, electric companies that serve this area, Tom B B Electric Co-op. And they had to get permission from Alabama Power to put fiber optic cable on the, on their poles. And I know that transaction took place because Mr. Foshee told me they were working out the details with Alabama Power, so I'm assuming the power company really has control of the poles in this, in this city, based on that.
That's all right, then I would, you know, assuming that that is correct, and Alabama Power owns the poles, and you have to, they own those light fixtures then, too. So, um, I would just ask for you guys' blessing on if I could audit any of the facilities, you know, the buildings that you own currently that, you know, the city operates out of.
It's been a long time since, uh, old city hall, we just moved from that city hall two years ago, and we left it as a police, it's our police station and courtroom, and, uh, magistrate, what have you, zoning. That, they stayed behind, but we moved down here. Uh, that's a pretty old building, and we might could do some good there. I don't know how long it's been since the library's been looked at. This is all new here, and I, I don't know if we want endeavor in this building right at this point or not. It's, it's only two years old since it's been totally renovated.
Right. But you currently do have some light fixtures out here, so do you have a maintenance staff that come and changes the light bulbs that are in this facility?
Rodney.
Okay. So if it's just me, you guys light, light bulbs for him to do the labor?
Rodney's got artificial lips, he don't need to be on a ladder, but he does it.
He does it, and somebody's doing it, right? But, um, you know, what about, you know, do you have a public library here that, that you guys own? Um, you know, just give me an idea. Um, you know, it doesn't cost you guys anything for me to do a lighting evaluation and to give you guys a free energy assessment. So, um, that's all part of presenting the numbers to you in hopes that I can earn your business. Um, I'd love to have the opportunity to do any facility that, you know, if you've got six or seven buildings, you know. Audited six or seven buildings for Tallisie, and, um, we're looking to get those going. Um, audited three or four for Demopolis, they chose to do city hall in the, in the library based off of, you know, the type of reduction I was able to give them on those facilities. So, um, all, like I said, that's free of charge, and it's just part of getting in front of you to understand, you know, what we can offer you.
The biggest building that we own in town is our recreation center. It's under total renovation, a two-point-seven million, all-new lighting throughout, is being put in with the contract. So it'll have brandy lighting, LED lighting, uh, going, you know. In three months, they'll be finishing up with it. It's under construction at, at this time, a total renovation. So we missed out on that one because it was in the contract to have the lighting, uh, already. But we got a few other buildings, and, uh, if the council wouldn't mind, he'd give us a free proposal, uh, I'll be glad to let you look at our buildings. Since we don't own our poles, I guess we don't have any options there.
Sure. Any questions you guys have for me, um, in hopes that I can earn your trust on giving you guys an energy audit, um, for free. Uh, I'd certainly appreciate you asking them now, so we can hopefully get the opportunity to do that.
I've, I've had some sources introduce me that we were familiar with, uh, to introduce me, Mr. Jones, and, uh, he has a, uh, do you have a partner in this business, or?
I do, yeah, we've, um, I'm part owner of this company, and also my partner's Tim Petro.
Okay. Uh, that is the father of Matt Petro, who was, uh, the, uh, headman with, uh, Retail Strategies. He's the one that introduced me to this company. His dad and Mr. Jones worked the company together, and he's, uh, Matt is the one, actually the one that called me about them making us a proposal. At the time we started talking, I, I wasn't sure what to tell him about the ownership of the poles. I kind of thought the city owned them at that time, and rethinking it, I don't know.
Well, since they were calling the shots on the.
Yeah, I think they own.
And since they do replace them, I mean, if any of them were damaged, they're the ones that come out and replace them, and.
I told Mr. Jones that they offered a maintenance contract after the service, uh, with this, and, uh, all maintenance would be done by the Alabama Power Company going forward. And they made that known in their proposal. Terrence, what was his last name, came, made a proposal from out of Tuscaloosa? Do you know him?
Terrence?
Yeah, that's with Alabama Power.
I do not.
Okay. Anyway, he, he came up with Melinda Weaver, our area representative, and they made a proposal to the council a few months ago, and she's just updated it with me this week. And she said that, um, the update, the, uh, update shows that I think we were gonna get about a four-hundred-and-something dollar increase in our, uh, the overall bill, monthly bill, now it's a hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-two cents would be the increase that they do on maintenance.
And is that a five-year deal, or is that a, is that a forever deal?
Uh, we haven't signed up with them yet. We were gonna, we were gonna get them to come back, and we were gonna trade with them and have one more interview with them before we made the deal, and, uh, let them fine-tune it, make sure that we understand what we're getting.
Right. I just didn't know how long they were gonna want you to pay.
Right now, we're just in the courtship, you know, we're about to, uh, trying to decide. We think we want this LED lighting for sure. Uh, no question that we think it would be a better whole-uniform look in our city, and all-new fixtures should have less maintenance than we're pulling now.
Certainly. And it will, I mean, they, you know, it's gonna significantly reduce, you know, Alabama Power's gonna be able to significantly reduce your, your maintenance on those lights.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to be able to sure, make sure you understand, how long is this contract for that you're paying the extra hundred and thirty dollars than what you're paying it now? And you want to make sure you get some savings, not only just quality light.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if it's only five years, and then you get the savings of the, the remainder of the longevity of the lights, then that's a good deal. But just make sure you're not in, in a forever contract like what you're in right now. You know, you're paying them what you're paying them forever. So those are just a couple of things I would ask them to make sure you get, once you guys get good savings on a change-out like that.
That points out some good things. We'll, we'll remember to ask those questions when they come.
And Alabama Power says that they own the poles as long as their lines own it. So if it's a pole without their line, then it's not their pole, does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
So, so if it has a, an Alabama Power line on it, it's an Alabama Power pole.
Right. And I mean, it's easy to identify if they are or not. Um, you know, most wooden poles in the city typically are, because all, all Alabama Power's poles are wooden. Like I just met with the hospital up there, they got their own metal poles right in their parking lot, and then you'll see on the security lighting are those wooden poles with the numbers on, you know, the light fixtures themselves, so. If that's the case for you guys, and that's what it is, but I'd just like to have the opportunity to help you reduce your energy footprint on any other buildings that you guys own that you're paying power on. I mean, you're paying sixteen thousand dollars a month. Eight thousand of that is currently on your streetlights, it's another eight thousand you can reduce somewhere. So I'd like to have the opportunity to give you guys a free energy audit to do that. And I know maybe a majority of that is the rape center, but you still got three or four, maybe some more other buildings that I could easily reduce your footprint and, and give you great ten-year warranty on your, on your light fixtures.
We've got a pretty large fire hall, and we got, uh, the police stations, we've got the library, we've got, uh, a couple of buildings over.
Water department?
Yeah, we've got, uh, the shops with, all of them have, uh.
There's a lot of them when you get back.
Right, so, you know, um.
We've got a water purification building up in the country here, uh, north of town. So it's about six buildings you probably could look at for us.
Sure, and you know, you know, any of those water departments or water purification buildings, you know, the lighting's in those pumps and whatnot, those are probably running twenty-four-seven. So anything that's running twenty-four-seven, you get your money back pretty quickly on converting that light fixture and getting a sixty percent energy reduction. So I know I can be of some help to you guys. Um, I'd just like some help in coordinating who I need to speak with in each one of these individual buildings. We'll package them up, we can package it as individual buildings separately, so if you wanted to do them, you know, piecemeal, you know, maybe you want to do a building a quarter, you know, you know, you wouldn't have to do some large, eight-building conglomerate, fifty thousand dollar investment, right? It would just be, hey, let's do the fire department for seven thousand dollars, see how a return is on that. Then you see how it works for the next couple of months, which I know it will. And then if you would like to allot some money to another facility, we can do it that way. But I'm gonna be able to come back and tell you, you know, which building you're gonna get the better return off of, based off of. It all comes down to hours of operation, existing wattage in that facility, and what you're paying for power. That's the math, and then with my wattage summary, my wattage reduction, I'm gonna be able to give you guys.
Well. If we lessen the bill, it helps, uh, the amount of money we have to spend to get there sometimes is painful, you know, because we don't have any money to throw away, all the workout and every dollar that we have, and which is draining our budget this year for sure, and so. Uh, but savings is savings, if it's, you know, true savings, then I think you'd get our interest. The, the city's, to listen to your proposal, we're not under any obligation, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
We certainly would want to be able to digest it and understand it and, and not be obligated because you've done the scenario, we, we, but if, if we buy it, then we'd be pleased with it, I think.
Sure, absolutely, you know, so I guess I just need to understand who would be the point person that we need to coordinate with to, to go and, you know, if there's a head person in each one of these seven or eight buildings that you'd like me to audit?
Yeah, if you, if you're gonna look at our buildings, well, if, if you're going to the fire hall, we will give you, you be the fire chief. If you're going to the library, we will give you the person, director of the library. If you're gonna look at the street department, we will give you the street superintendent. So you'll have a person reach, and we'll give you the police chief for the, uh, police station. Uh, so we want you to work with those people, and we'll let them know that when you come there, show you the ropes, okay?
Sure.
They're redoing the Rick Center now, how about the lighting over there in that Rick Center?
That's in the contract.
Included.
It, it's already included in the contract.
Different lighting.
It'll be LED.
Yeah.
A hundred percent LED.
Yeah, okay.
So you guys are already, you know, going to LED. This would be another good opportunity for you to get an idea of how you can upgrade some other facilities that aren't doing a full construction renovation, right?
Yeah, this is the only one that we've got under construction.
Are you just renovating the, are you reconstructing the gym over there or is it the entire facility?
All of it.
Okay.
The dumpster has been outside, got in the building. It's all brand new inside, every bit of it. Including flooring, uh, new ceilings, new lighting, new air conditioning, new heat. Uh, everything's new. New, new roof, new doors.
In other words, we're probably better off techable now.
That sounds like it.
We, uh, we probably gonna have a building worth over six million dollars when we finish with it.
This will be nice.
Cost us two point seven to get it renovated.
Okay, well, uh, the next step would be just who can I talk to to help get me associated with each individual representative at these other buildings?
Just go back to Amy and ask her for the department heads for the water, street.
Okay.
Police, fire, and library, those five.
So you said water, police, fire, and library?
Yes, fire, police, street, uh, library, five.
Okay, and when you say street, what, what are they overseeing? I mean, um, is that the pole lights that we're discussing or is that?
We've got a shop, we got, uh, a couple of buildings that, that are manned by the street department.
Okay.
Sanitation department's there.
Alright. Any other questions for me at this moment?
Let's look forward to your visit when you get some info for us.
Absolutely. When is the, um, when's your next workshop so I can try to, you know, coordinate with these folks?
We have a, we have a Wednesday meeting prior to our, we have a first Monday and a third Monday meeting. Each Wednesday before those meetings, we have a workshop.
Okay. So I'll probably see you guys sometime, maybe in April.
We, it'd be a good time.
Okay.
Let's just try to coordinate the second workshop of the, in April.
Okay.
You and I may talk before then to firm that up, okay?
Yeah, it'll work.
Thank you for coming today.
Hey, absolutely.
Enjoy the having.
Yes, sir.
If you got some handouts for the council, how about passing those out so they could look at some of your work?
This is just some small information about, you know, four or five slides worth about what we do. They've got a streetlight proposal, I mean, not proposal, but just a, um, spec sheet, but, um, other than that, you got to see just kind of a little bit about who LED Solutions is, other than meeting me and.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anybody else need a business card possibly? You've got my information, but.
Yes, I do.
You give one?
I'll give one to Amy.
She'll give you those, uh, names and numbers that you'll need to course, course on.
And she already has the power issues, doesn't she?
Yes, she's working on that for you now.
Alright, great.
Nice meeting you, son.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
You've done a good job.
Well, I'll do some better work for you when we come back. Thank y'all.
Sorry we don't own our poles.
It's alright.
Go to the.
It's alright. We got another opportunity. I appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
That's gotten a lot closer. It's only a hundred and thirty dollars now. It was over four hundred dollars, uh, to go to, with plan two, but uh, Melinda Weaver put me on notice that it's, it's gotten better. So, I, I'm not that far away from wanting to get us some brand new lighting put up in our city. Y'all think on it. Let me know when you wanna put it in, in form of a vote. Uh, we've had a mix-up in the paper. They ran the wrong notice on our public hearing for assembly. And we need to stay till five thirty, uh, at least a quorum of us to, in case someone comes for the public hearing on, on the twenty-seventh. The paper messed that up. We sent them a new, uh, item to put, uh, for the meeting to be the fourth. But he's sent out, he's passed out, hand-delivered, uh, to the community for the fourth for his public hearing. So there's people on notice both ways. The paper had it the twenty-seventh. He's gone out to the surrounding folks there around him and passed out, hand-delivered his, uh, notice to them for, to be the fourth, so. It appears we're needing to have two public hearings for assembly. One because of the paper at five-thirtieth this evening and then another one Monday night in our regular meeting. So, it's unusual the way it's worked out, but it's because of a malfunction on our printed notice.
But you said we're supposed to need to stay here, we need to be here at five-thirty today.
In case, if, if someone comes to a public hearing, we need to be able to hear them, hear their reasoning for if they have anything to say or object. I don't think anybody will show up, but it's possible they will. Uh, we don't usually have anyone attend the public hearing. Part of the thing, there hasn't been any objections waged to other people who wanna be licensed to sell, uh, beer or wine. But in this case, there might be somebody, so we need to be available. I hate that Andrea left. I was gonna get her to give us an update on the rec center. I've talked to her. She did tell me that she thinks things are on schedule at the rec center. Uh, but she don't see any reason that we should go badly over our, uh, ten-month allotted period for the reconstruction of the rec center. Uh, she's pretty certain that it's gonna finish up on her about the date that, uh, was scheduled for that. Jerry has asked for a, a little bit of time. I've not granted him any time, uh, extra. And we're gonna try to hold it within the limits of the ten-month contract. Jerry Brown Arts Festival is this weekend, uh, Saturday and Sunday at Tom Bigby. They'll be starting fairly early in the morning. And, uh, we have been asked by the certification board to participate in some hanging baskets for our downtown area. Uh, Waddy Loon says he can, uh, rig up automatic waters to keep those flowers looking good. Uh, the two banks, uh, First State Bank and First National Bank have, uh, committed to buy two each. And, uh, I'd like to get the city to get two baskets, so we'll have a total of six baskets. Uh, the cost of those two baskets will be three forty to three fifty. I talked to Waddy about it the day we were handing out our, uh, small trees, seedlings out here. Was that yesterday, Angela, that they were here?
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday.
And you did talk to Tim about the poles and they don't have power on them and everything's good?
I talked to the fire chief and he went down and looked at it and he stopped Waddy and he said, he don't see any reason there's, but there'd be any danger to anyone in the public being around those poles, uh. He's, that actually this waterer is, is hooked to our automatic sprinkler. When those kicks on, it just sends water up the pole. It's not an electric pump that's hooked to the pole. It's just a pressure pump that works off of our watering system that's already there. So, Waddy says he can keep them watered. That way, Marshall watered those flowers all last year and they've never looked prettier in my opinion than, than they were last year. Uh, and she watered them every day all summer. She said she don't think she can do that this year, so. Uh, water and flowers go together real good. Flowers without water don't usually do very well. So these will be automatically watered and he showed me pictures of these baskets yesterday and they're real attractive. Uh, basically, it's called a coconut cell, coconut hull container. It's pliable, it's fibrous. And they'll have to, those will have to be replaced about every two years, the containers for the flowers. The dirt will go in them and then there's some wire baskets that bolt on to the pole. The wire baskets hold the coconut, uh, uh, textured, uh, pliable holes. The ones he showed me were molded, but he said he can take straight ones and mold them to the baskets and they'll work just fine. And, uh, they're not real expensive. He showed me a pair of those are about thirty-five dollars. So about every two years, he'd have to spend about thirty-five dollars to replace the baskets that the flowers go in.
So is the, the dampness gonna be next to the poles or is it gonna be solid next to the poles? What, what, did Mike have any concerns about damage to the poles with the moisture?
The, the actual pots won't touch the poles.
Okay.
And the water will drip out of them, but they won't be running down the pole. They'll drip through the, uh, baskets themselves. There shouldn't be no, no damage to our equipment. I've talked to, uh, Tim, Ryan, and Mike about it. Both of them think it's a good idea. A lot of cities are already using these and they're happy with them. But our cost to get the other two is gonna run around three hundred and forty dollars. Waddy says that he can buy them cheaper than the ones advertised in the book and that he'll get the best price on them. Building security here. We've been talking about building security amongst our employees. Angela, I'm gonna let you address that and I'll echo whatever sentiments. Let's, let's start from the beginning with when we started talking about this, how we kinda feel about our building here.
We had just talked about, um, building a wall. Like as you come in downstairs, if you take a left like where Ginny is sitting now, if we back her up against the actual historical wall of, of the original building and build just a, a, like a, a wall to separate it where people can't just walk in and.
They'll walk up to a glass or the counter there.
Yes, the, the walk up to a counter, um, you know, Ginny can help them there. We would have like the coded key doors where they could be let in. Uh, they could still ride the elevators or take the stairs, but once they get up here, there would be another, uh, section.
The elevators would have little stops where they, up here, they can't just stroll into their offices and intimidate us or, or hurt us for that matter. The, uh, the, uh, security here is very low. We've got our people who collect money behind glass and behind coded doors. So we feel pretty good about that, but if somebody just comes to see y'all mad or deranged somehow and, and have decided this label hurts somebody, uh, we're all vulnerable. Starting with our receptionist and then it comes to the people who work in the government offices upstairs and we just feel unprotected as it is.
So if you wanna use the stairs, Ginny has to let you through?
No, you can use the stairs. Well, but once you get up here, you.
I'm just confused. You'll just have to show me.
I mean, I'd have to walk out there and show you where we're talking about putting the walls. It would be like on the other side of the elevators, up here, where you could still ride the elevator up to this floor, but then you couldn't just, cause that would defeat the purpose of having the wall downstairs if you could get on the elevator or take the stairs and come up here and steal, um.
So once they get up here, Amy or you have to let them pass?
Yes, there would be another.
If Jenny let them behind her door where they could use the stairs and come up.
That's what I was asking. How do you get to the stairs? You, Ginny has to let you behind her wall to use the stairs?
She could. You know, if they want to come up the stairs, if they want to come up the elevator, then we would have to, to buzz them through a door.
Give her a chance to screen them and get their pulse, see if they're upset about something, if they're.
I was thinking of the other stairwell that's on the side, sorry.
They can't get on that stairwell by coming up the side. It's a net exit only. You can't open that door and come up that stairwell. You gotta come up the elevators or the one behind her desk. Nobody can come up that stairwell over there.
Well, the wall.
I thought you could.
I just. We can't block the bathrooms from the public.
No, they won't be blocked. If we, if we build the wall on the other side of the bathroom doors, kind of like between, uh, like the ladies restroom and where Tim's window is where he's at now from the rec center. If we build it just the other side of the restrooms, that gives enough area for Ginny to still have, uh, her office, to be set up basically like she is now.
We'll let Jerry Dyer look at it. He's actually given us some, an idea of what he thinks he could do for us and also a price. Uh, he's, do you have a copy of his sheet with you?
I don't think I do.
His price for all that, about twenty-four thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
But that was with, uh, the safety doors, all the, the buzzer type systems, the, the protective glass.
Hey, I, hey, Emma. Uh, we, we've got another meeting at five-thirty, so you go ahead about what you wanna do about eating or whatever. Now get me something for coming home.
But, um.
Okay, I'll talk to you later.
Not something that's a must, it's just something we've, this, we've discussed, um. Amy, Angela, Rodney, Ginny, and myself talked about it to him. And we think that security is pretty low. Uh, a lot of public offices, I've talked to, uh, some mayors about their facilities. The, uh, mayor in Florence told me that when you get off the elevator, his, his assistant was directly in front of the elevator door, looking right into their office. He closed that door and built her a door to the side with security on it. He said, I was very uncomfortable with that situation. And he said, we secured our building and we can screen whoever's coming in and, and actually find out their business when they come to make sure that we want them to be in the building. There's, uh, other people who are looking, thinking security now and it's just something we kicked around. We haven't, we haven't committed in any way to do it. It's just that we wanted to let y'all think on it. We don't have to have any decision today. We just wanted to open up the conversation about it. We want you to, uh, think about it with us, maybe help design a plan. Or if we do nothing, you know, we'll, we'll make it, but we just thought to, it might be something worthy that we wanna do.
Looks like you'd be the only one they'd be wanting to get after. They're not gonna be after her by any night.
If they come in mad, they don't really care who's in the way to get where they're going, you know?
If somebody's mad at the city, uh, they're just mad at the city. Um, and they're mad at everybody that's associated with the city, even you, from the lady, the.
What y'all gonna do about it? I think you're gonna put locks on our houses. They don't. Give them a collar? They'll put one on her.
I want y'all to, I want y'all to.
Hey, by the way, I was kidding when I said that to begin with.
To meet, to meet causes. The people get mad at governments, they get mad at officials, they get mad at policemen. I've even heard of, uh, some bullets having policeman's names written on them, that some people had seen. And, uh, you know, that, that says a lot.
To get them personally.
And we just have to think about things like, uh, security is security and, and I think it's a day which we have to observe the need for security. security is security and, and I think it's a day which we have to observe the need for security. Sometimes if someone perceives that you've done something to them, you re, you might not be guilty, but in their eyes, you might be guilty and they might be, uh, out of control when they come and I just
You can see what's already happened. That's the City Hall. And that's a good example, actually.
Yeah.
What people, you wouldn't think about doing, you know, you wouldn't think about doing something. You don't, you don't ever know in this day and time.
Madness is, is something that we all have to be very conscious of and a lot of people now settle their grievances in dramatic fashion. They don't look at the hereafter, after the action. They just wanted to lash out at someone and I'm not scared to come down here every day. But I just want us to be in control of the situation should something happen. Y'all think on it with us. We're, we just wanted to open up for discussion today a little bit and Angela and I, I've talked and we just got Jerry to come down and do a walkthrough and, and give us an estimate. Uh, not commit, we're not committed to Jerry Dyer on anything, but we let him look at our building to see if he thought it, he could secure it without actually much damage in the, uh, the value of our historic area of the building. And none of the things he proposed are in, in any of the old building at all. Everything's in the new section of the building. So, that's just some things we wanted to be sure that we didn't do is destroy our historic view of the building or value.
Well, it gets right down to it and I'm not, I'm, whatever y'all want to do about the security, I, I don't care. If anybody wants to get you, they'll get you anyway. Whether it's in this building or outside or at your house or whatever now.
Ted, you got your other proposal to, uh, take that and compare it.
Okay.
I've got my, I've got it saved on my computer. I can print me a new one anytime I need one. Look at that. Let's discuss that some more right away and see if we want to go ahead and get our LED. Whether we, uh, deal with young Mr. Jones or his company, you know, that's beside the point. He's gonna look at some of our buildings, but we're under no obligation at all to him. We'll think on those things. We may, we may be months or even years away from trading with him, but I think this thing with our company is, is coming that more into focus and we're down to a hundred and three dollars to have all new lighting with ten-year warranties on, you know, and no maintenance for us. They do all the maintenance. I kind of like to see us look like our city look a little better. I think that would really help at night when we have even lighting throughout the city. I really think we could do well by getting the new ones for them. Put a little study on that for us. Give us your opinion. You guys be thinking about it too. If y'all want a copy of that, well, I can get you one printed off my computer. I just had one with you today.
Start asking, no kickbacks.
We got a brand new man covering our meetings, if y'all noticed today.
Yeah.
Not Wayne either. He's been to City Hall already this week.
That's correct. Don't have you scared here trying to get security here either. Friend come back, we'll kill you. I've been needing security all my life. I'm lucky to make a day before.
And we've enjoyed, uh, some food together this week, haven't we?
That's true.
For sure. Got another new business opened up this week. Our city's been blessed with some new businesses. A new pharmacy not so long ago.
Are you talking about a station?
Yeah, I do, uh, uh, manufacturing company, Hamilton All Builders has opened up, going great guns and uh, now we've got, uh, Sibley Oil with a new super station in Delhi in town and we've got, uh, Jax going full blast and it seems that our town's really, really busy.
Chinese coming in on the corner.
Yeah. Having, I got, uh, word this week from a company that said they're monitoring, uh, cities between five and ten thousand that are being most, uh, looked at as a place to move to. And we're in the top, Hamilton is in the top twenty-five of those company, uh, those cities that are being looked at. This company is monitoring all that and, and they sent me congratulations yesterday and asked me to send them a, a statement that they're publishing in our, in their magazine, uh, right away and they're gonna send us a copy of the publication and y'all will get to read it. I'll not comment something. My last phrase, why wouldn't anyone not want to move, move to Hamilton? I asked them a question after I told them all the things that Hamilton asked to offer. I left them with a question, why would anyone not want to live in Hamilton?
I got a couple right before you come to that.
Well, you know, Sibley hadn't really supposed to be open yet and we were down there yesterday.
Yeah.
And they wasn't, hadn't announced their grand opening or anything. And you know how busy they were yesterday and they weren't even, people coming up and buying gas and buying food and stuff and they had some good food in there too, didn't they?
Oh, my goodness. It was wash your day. They're even busier today.
It was busy. I couldn't believe yesterday it hadn't even been announced that they were open.
Yesterday morning I got a call from, uh, DOT and they had a little glitch in their turn lane, left turn lane going south. The light was out and, uh, it had been working. They didn't thank me for the light and, and said it was working. But Mike and Philip P. went down there and in about three minutes, they had it up and going again, but the shows electric's coming back today to check that light and our light here. I had to put it on flashing last night when I left the baseball game. Uh, pulled up behind the little girl sitting down here waiting to go left. She sat there seven minutes. I finally got out of my vehicle. I was stuck behind her and I said, young lady, when you see it clears out, the light's not gonna change. It stopped working, so you need to pull on out. She had about twenty cars light back down the hill here and, uh, so she moved on and I did and everybody started filtering in, but I had Mike Johnson to come back down here and put it on flashing. Caution until this morning when they can work on it. So it spent the night last night just flashing. But the side light would never change. It stayed on green and, uh, she kept waiting and waiting and waiting. I finally just went up and told her that it wasn't working. She, she was patient. I'll say that for her.
Everybody behind her was.
No, those people already pulling out. Their wheels were, their fenders were sticking out in the other lane. They was beginning to make a move and I, I didn't see any reason for them to try to come up beside us and block the other lane and so we finally got everybody moving forward, but was having to do it with caution because the, the street light wasn't working. Mike says it has something to do with two more coils they've got to put in down here. But he put it on a timer this morning and it's been working on a timer all day. Well, we, we got ten minutes till five and then five-thirty, we got forty minutes, so anything that y'all want.